Welcome back all who care to join us in standing for our recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy glory be on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It is now seven o'clock. Shall we see the council next call of order? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You seated please. Roll call please Mr. Cuthbert.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cuthbert, here. Mr. Martin, Mr. McGlocklin.
I was aware of Mr. McGlocklin's absence this evening. I know he's going out of town for a extended period. I'm not aware of the absence of Mr. Martin. But we shall see perhaps if he's becoming as we move along here. I'll maintain a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Robb, to dispense with the reading of the journal from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Cuthbert, here. Mr. Martin, here.
Yeah.
A note for the record, Mr. Martin is in the house. In his, alright, thank you very much. Now, those who cast, if they're not coming to public comment, if anyone has public comments to make at this time, or like to reserve time to comment on legislation or issues on the agenda later on, please come to podium, state your name and address, and what you'd like to speak on, or speak now.
I'm Mary Girikin, three five seven one Allen Road, Shelby, Ohio. I'm here to represent the City of Shelby's Preservation Commission as we discuss our faculty. That'll leave it.
Thank you.
Jessica Gervin, eleven ninety-five Hart Road, Minkville, Ohio. And I will speak when we talk about the CRA.
CRA?
Yes.
An invited guest this evening is Sam Foley here from Soil and Water, so I'll be presenting a proclamation to him here in just a little while. Any other public comments? If there are none, say nothing. Move on to reports from standing on special committees. Community and Economic Development Committee members. Councilman Cuthbert.
Yeah, it wasn't a very long meeting, but we had a few things to highlight. First off, there is a new chip liaison by the name of Cindy Schirpulon. I haven't met her yet, but hopefully she will be coming to give us a, introduce herself in the near future. Next thing is the vibrant community grant for the Shaw building that's done. They're basically, they've got all the contractor quotes and architectural renderings and stuff done. And they're basically down to just needing funding to get it done, which is going to be anywhere from one point two to one point five million. So it definitely needs a lot of work. Next is a pretty big one that I haven't talked about yet. Hamline is expanding. We've already passed some legislation and get some sewer and water to help with that project that they're doing in the industrial part. But that's, that's a big one. They're looking to add thirty new jobs here in the Shelby community, so that's wonderful. Very, very great. So they have a building there, but this is actually going to be a separate building, kind of off to the end there past Pioneer, if you're heading north. They're totally redoing it. All new equipment, new rail spur, everything. So we're really excited about that. Waiting for it to seem to done. And it's looking like it might be done in March. So they're moving along quick too. So the only other thing is the regional planning, the comprehensive plan, which is actually on legislation tonight. They've gotten eleven proposals in for that, and that's, that's a regional thing. Originally, when we talked about it in the beginnings, it was just something a Shelby thing, but Mrs. Gervin's there, has went out and talked to some other community members, and we kind of broadened that scope to make it more of a county-wide thing. Nashville is involved, and the county commissioner has got involved. So, yeah, waiting for it to hit that, develop. And that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Cuthbert. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Cuthbert in regard to his report? Here, now we'll move on. Thank you, sir. Public Works and General Operations Committee, Councilman Robb.
The committee met on the twenty-third. Just to raise a few things to the committee. First, the contract language for the Salem Little Fire Station is ongoing. Still working on that. Remind everybody that we do have a charter amendment on this year's ballot, and that's coming up soon. We had quite a few events planned this summer. There are Central Park area, and there's another one coming up here in October. And that's all done in cooperation with the Parks Department. Kudos to them for getting these things through. And last but not least, Stormwater Awareness Week is October first through the seventh. We'll hear a little bit more about that here in a minute, and that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to his report? Here, now move forward, thank you. The Safety Committee did not meet. It now takes us to reports of city officials. I do have a proclamation with Mr. Sam Foley here tonight with the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District, and he's here to receive the proclamation. And we were just talking before the meeting this week. It always just begins, I think, by the governor's direction on October first. So we're kind of with the proclamation a little bit at the tail end of this week, but we try to do it every year in some form or fashion. And so this is Stormwater Awareness Week proclamation, October one, two thousand twenty-five through October seven, two thousand twenty-five. It reads, whereas urban stormwater runoff impacts water quality in the Black Fork watershed, in the city of Shelby, in Richland County, Ohio, and whereas population growth, residential and commercial development, and resulting changes to the landscape will only increase stormwater quality and quantity concerns throughout Ohio, and whereas these impacts cannot be entirely avoided or eliminated, but can be minimized, and whereas it is currently recognized that control of stormwater quantity and quality is most effectively implemented when people and organizations understand the related causes and consequences of polluted stormwater runoff and flooding, and the actions they can take to control these, and whereas the need arises not only from the regulatory requirements of EPA general construction and municipal stormwater rules, but also from the recognition that citizens and local decision-makers will benefit from a greater awareness of how the cumulative impacts of decisions at home, at work, and through local policies impact our water quality, stream corridors, and flooding. And whereas the development and implementation of effective outcome-based stormwater education and outreach programs will meet the related federal stormwater pollution control requirements and those of the communities they serve, so that Ohio continues to be a great place to live, work, and play, now therefore be it resolved that I, Stephen Elshay, Mayor of the City of Shelby, Ohio, encourage the citizens of Shelby to enjoy the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District and the communities across Ohio in recognizing Stormwater Awareness Week, October first through the seventh, two thousand twenty-five. In witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this sixth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. So, Mr. Foley, we're happy to join others in breaking awareness to stormwater issues we face, and thank you for all you do with soil and water. If you want to make a few comments to council, we're happy to do that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shag. Yeah, so hi, everybody. My name is Sam Foley. I'm a previous citizen of Shelby, grew up here, graduated in two thousand and eight, actually, from Shelby High School. And, yeah, I'm proud to be here on behalf of the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. I want to thank Mayor Shag, the council, and the city for accepting our two thousand twenty-five proclamation for Stormwater Awareness Week. I'm a district technician at Richland Soil and Water, and I work in stormwater permitting. I've got an urban focus, and stormwater is something I'm thinking about constantly. Our outreach efforts this year has a theme of keeping Dirk in its place, and I just wanted to touch on really the easiest way for us to do that. It's really just to plan for a timely stabilization. Anytime you've got a construction project and we're going to be disturbing the soil, we just want to kind of have a plan in place and be ready when that seeding window comes to stabilize that ground and keep that soil from eroding, running off, and ending up in the Black Fork here from Shelby. So let's see here. You want to plan with the weather to make sure your seeding efforts are successful. Now is a really good time to get your site stabilized heading into winter here. If you're looking for recommendations or help on when to seed, what to seed, reach out to us. We're always happy to help. And I really do believe that these small outreach campaigns can make a big difference throughout the community. And thanks again. Thank you.
Any questions for Sam? Bluegrass or green grass or, either grass, brown grass? Okay. Thank you, Sam, for coming on. Appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Alright, so before that, under my report, the mayor's report, since our last council meeting, I have been occupied with typical mayoral duties and delights. September eighteenth, I presided over a mayor staff meeting. September twenty-second, I attended a virtual webinar in with the topic, hot topics for Ohio's political subdivisions in two thousand twenty-five, and a very educational time there. September twenty-third, I presided over a meeting of the Shelby City Planning Commission, and exciting things will be announced further from the results of some variances we granted there. September twenty-fourth, Mr. Geis and I attended a meeting of the Richland County Regional Planning Commission Executive Committee, of which we are both members. On September twenty-fifth, I attended a meeting of our Healthy Shelby Coalition at good attendance, and a lot of good ideas were brought to the table there in that Healthy Shelby Coalition meeting. October the second, I was privileged to attend and participate in the twenty-sixth Annual Scholarship Recognition Program facilitated by the North Central State College Foundation. This is a truly powerful event that's held here in Shelby's Kegel Center. Heard very, just some, just some stories from graduates who have been recipients of scholarships, and how the scholarship has been impacting their education, getting their diplomas, and many of them virtually debt-free. So it's just a great, great program there. October the third, I announced the selection of Captain Samuel Saugter as our next chief of the Shelby Fire Department, and we're hoping in the next couple of days to announce the swearing-in ceremony for Captain, soon-to-be Chief Saugter. Yesterday, I delivered a proclamation, well, Sunday, of course, I delivered a proclamation of recognition and congratulations at the First United Methodist Church upon their two-hundredth anniversary. And they've got quite the story to tell, and the story is still unfolding. And so again, a heartfelt congratulations to the First United Methodist Church, two hundred years. They actually began meeting in eighteen twenty-one, but formalized and gathered in eighteen twenty-five to make it, of course, eighteen thirty-four, when we were organizing here in the city, building gambles and all that. So they, they predate even our official organization. So, good stuff there. Alrighty, are there any questions for me in regard to my report or any comments? If not, we'll turn the page. Who is at the top of the page? Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. Pretty much normal business in my departments. We're still going through the work to transition our accounting software. I guess the biggest thing is, in the immediate future, is tax deadline. Extended tax returns will be October fifteenth. So I just wanted to remind all of the citizens to bring those in the city hall for then, otherwise you will be getting a letter from our Illinois Tax Department. So that's pretty much my report, sir.
Mr. Crum, that's a letter you did not want to receive.
That's right.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum? Alright, thank you, sir. If not, we'll move forward to Mr. Dorley, Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mayor. I have my report.
Thank you, sir. To Mr. Joe Geis, Project Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. With our K V program, it finished the last of the asphalt down today. So we'll go back and do it again. Main holes, catch bases, water holes, and all that, and then it'll be done. We continue on lots of planning on different projects coming up, like the Mickey Road project. Also required for that grant for sidewalk on Mickey Road. That was presented at state level for that grant in November, December. We should hear, but not we're getting that, so it's coming up soon. Safe Racks and School project is still being developed, engineered and so forth. And our state consolidated storm line is almost, lots of work with gas companies out there. There's gas mains and different things being out there, so we'll have that very soon. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Geis? Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Geis in regard to his report? Mr. Robb?
One about West Street from Longarm Avenue, just miling, doing the plans to rectify that situation.
Mr. Geis? That is still being discussed. Stay tuned. I'm sure you will. Mr. Cuthbert?
Will any of those streets get striped, or are they just too small for that?
Mr. Geis? Just the crosswalks will get striped. Any more questions? If not, we'll move forward then to New Business. There is a motion under New Business to be taken at the council. What is it?
Who do approve Clark Avenue, Brick Street, and Stone Curve as a local landmark per ordinance fourteen eighty-eight point oh seven?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Mr. Cuthbert, to approve Clark Street, sorry, Clark Avenue, Brick Street, and Stone Curve as a local landmark per ordinance fourteen eighty-eight point oh seven. Mrs. Durkin is here, if you want to make some comments on that, maybe introduce the ideas of the Historic Preservation Commission, why they're bringing this to council this evening. I think we have something in your pack. Is anybody else going to be that kind of aware of that?
We had previously brought this nomination to council, and council members wanted more information as far as costs, as far as repairing and redoing the street. And Mr. Geis worked at that, and I think he's had copies of those cost things. I just wanted to say a little something. Clark Avenue was laid out in nineteen fourteen, and it's the only brick paved street left here in Shelby with those wonderful curves. The bricks and the curves are a reminder of Shelby's architectural past, and it's history. With minimum ma, with minimum maintenance, it has lasted already more than a hundred years, unlike any other street here in Shelby. The city of Shelby has had to do very little to maintain this one block of Clark Avenue. There's no other street in Shelby that's gone a hundred and eleven years without significant maintenance. If we were to compare the maintenance costs of any other street in Shelby to what Clark Avenue has cost the city, we would definitely realize that Clark Avenue's the cheaper one at this point in time. If Clark Avenue were to need major maintenance in the future, it would probably last another one hundred and eleven years. That would be a big savings to our city in Shelby in the facts of things. I propose tonight that council accepts the nomination of Clark Avenue as a locally designated historic landmark as requested by the City of Shelby's Preservation Commission. And I'm here that if you have questions, I or you, Mr. Geis, can answer, because he has worked with us through all of this.
Thank you. Mr. Robb?
First of all, I, I just can't support this designating this street as a historic street. It just, number one, it takes too much away from the city. Number two, did, did you ever discuss this with any of the residents on Clark Avenue?
No, we have had public hearings, and, and none of the residents have come to those.
My question was, did you go up there and talk to the people that live on that street?
No, I have not.
Nobody has?
I don't think they've really been talked to since Garland Gate.
So we don't know how they feel about the street and the condition it's in?
No, I mean, unless you've gotten comments here about the street.
Okay. How do you propose the city is going to continue to maintain this street in a condition or a better condition at its end when we have issues trying to maintain other streets? We're going to have to throw money into this thing and continually for the next hundred years. I remember a few years ago, the street department undertook some repairs up there and actually did some restoration work on part of it. The street's not in bad shape right now, but my, my big problem is the continuation of the maintenance of that street. And every time we want to do something to that, we have to go back to the commission to get their approval on, on everything, so.
How much, you know, how much did it cost to do the recent maintenance to the?
I'm sorry?
How much did it cost to do the recent maintenance on the street?
Well, I'm, I'm looking through your paperwork here, and I'm seeing that just, just to do a small area, sixteen thousand dollars. That's for, how much of the street is that going to cover?
Mr. Geis got those numbers.
I'm not asking Mr. Geis, I'm asking you.
I know, I'm just sorry, I, I am not.
Well, I think Mr. Geis is part of this conversation.
With, you know, with the numbers. I just, I, you know, I can't believe that this street is costing you more than any other street in Shelby at this point in time. If, if, if you needed to do a repair, our, our commission, who you have all made and everything, works with, you know, that, and, I mean, other than tearing it all up, we would be very forward about you wanting to make a repair to the street. I mean, they, you know, we just want it preserved. We don't, we want it to be there.
Oh, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think there's any objection to us doing the repair. Certainly don't want to degrade the historic nature of it. The question becomes, does the, do we need to declare a historic landmark in order to do what we have continually done for the last hundred-some years? I am, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Robb's reasoning. I hate doing things as a council that are going to lock in future generations to something that is convenient for us to do now, because we don't know what the future holds there. We also don't know, once we do this, this major repair, what the street, what the outcome will end up being. I would, what I, in a sense, would propose, I think that we go forward with the, the restoration as outlined here, and then we revisit, after it's completed, the state of affairs there, and then maybe we look at doing a designation at that time. But I think doing a designation today, before we've even attempted to do sixteen thousand dollars repairs, not knowing what is able to be done underneath, or what awaits us, would be unwise. I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to fixing. I think we should go forward with the repairs as priced out. I don't see, especially compared to the asphalt and some of that, it's not, that, that's not the big deal. I just don't want to, future generations, something at the end of the day is merely a feel-good measure.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the city keeping it brick and making small repairs like that. I mean, really sixteen thousand in terms of roadwork isn't a lot of money. But I do not want to hamstring future generations with this designation of a historic landmark. You know, if they don't see it viable in the future to keep that brick and want to rip it up, that should be their decision. That's the way I feel about it. Plus, it's, the other thing is, if you got to go through there doing utility work, so they want to run a sewer line through there, you rip all that up, and then you got to lay it all back down. It's going to have a lot more money to a project like that. And you never know what's going to come in the future. You never know what kind of utilities will change, and maybe they need to change the elevation levels of sewer or whatever. We see it all the time. So I just don't think that this designation would be useful or practical for future generations of Shelby.
Mr. Robb?
I'd like to read something from the minutes of the public hearing here. And this, speaking of you, Mayor. He added, "A part of council's concern may stem from the uncertainty about the ability to remove or hold of the bricks in the future if such a decision became necessary." In response, Ms. Durkin and Mr. Samso explained that any future changes would require the city to submit a certificate of appropriateness, which would need to be reviewed and approved by the Shelby Historic Preservation Commission prior to implementation regardless, regardless of the nature of the proposed changes. So, you know, a loose brick, according to what's stated here, would require the, a certificate of appropriateness to put that brick back would be necessary. So here we are, jumping through hoops to do a street repair that, you know, normally just walk out there and put the thing back. I just don't want to tie anybody's hands with this. Future generations and the current administration. Nobody's talked to the people on Clark Avenue, I have not, about how they feel about it. One other thing, I'm looking at the, at the. One other thing, I'm looking at the, at the, at the nomination here, and it said, "An address of historic property," it just says Clark Avenue. Are we talking about the old street or just the brick part?
Yeah, just the one block.
Then maybe we need to change that, 'cause Clark Avenue goes for two blocks, not just one.
Mr. Roberts?
We've talked about this before. There are no, there are no utilities underneath that road, am I correct?
Mr. I, uh, exit.
Right here. No, there are not. The water bay is to the east of the road. San Antonio Sewer is in the background.
So if something happened, we would never have to disturb the road.
There are four water service lines that do right under the road.
See, I grew up three hundred feet from that block avenue, up at the top of it. So nobody here has the more nostalgia, you know, for that street than I do, but I can't, you know, I mean, like everybody else, I really don't wanna tie the hands. I would like to see it, for a man like it is, with a third pair, but what are we gonna do? But, you know, I certainly don't wanna see future councils, future administrations, you know, having to jump through all the hoops to make sure that that is preserved if we vote tonight to preserve it.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, and I just wanna, just for clarity purposes, wanna reiterate what we're looking at here. We're, I think, and I'm gonna speak for council, I'm appreciative, glad to do such a thing, but I think we're all in favor of fixing the bricks. I don't think any of us wants to rip up the bricks and put in asphalt. That's not the question of course. The question is, is it deserving of a landmark status that we just can't predict the future of? And so my thinking is, I'm not even opposed to landmark status pro forma. What I would like to see, though, is that we do this initial repair and see if it takes. We don't even know, after a couple winters, if it's actually going to work. We are relying on contractors who don't do this that much, and I assure you that it's gonna be increasingly so. And so, you know, I'm fully in favor of spending the sixteen thousand to do the repair, see how it looks, see how it feels, and then being able to make a more educated guess on the future of that landscape and that road. We just don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know the requirements that are gonna come down on us for roads in general, as more autonomous driving vehicles and all that kind of stuff starts to take shape. And we don't want to hamster ourselves to what is essentially a driveway. Okay? We're not talking about, you know, this is a different thing where we're, a landmark is a building, okay? Or even a landmark, you know, as the post going into the park. Those are things that we can say and kinda justify, that, you know what, those are likely going to be able to be replaced, et cetera, if they're, a road is simply something of a different nature that I don't think any of us can properly foresee. So my vote would definitely be return this. Let's do the repairs. Again, we've been maintaining this road without a designation. It's not as if there's a big cry from the administration or some corporation to rip it up that we need to protect it. So I just don't see where this is needed at this point and to the point not necessary to do was right by that road. Any further discussions?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Motion to approve, passed. Any other new business to be brought up for council this evening? An old business, the smokestack and Mr. Ensmen, maybe just give us a brief verbal, we have some quotes and so forth we're working through and missed that sort of thing.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm in the process of receiving some quotes. I haven't reached out to another company for a quote. Mr. Geis and I had a conversation today. We've kinda went back in history there a little bit. We have an engineer that was putting together bid package floors. We're gonna go through the land bank for the demolition of the smokestack. We're gonna reach back out to the engineer to see if we can complete that bid package. The financial terms will exceed the bid amount. So ultimately, we will, or we seek our incremental performance.
Mr. Martin?
So clarification, what's the R and P for specifically?
To receive a, to either A, demolish the smokestack, or to renovate the structure.
These contracts, you vote?
Any contract.
So the plan as it is now, again, I'm just trying to get clarity. The plan as is now is to get two separate pieces of information, to demolish, to not demolish, and then as council, we can make a decision about what's the appropriate path forward at that point.
Correct.
Yeah. It'd be to demolish or preserve, I guess, if I could get a better way of it. Put the same, put the same thing. Any other unfinished business to be brought up for council this evening? I'll move forward then to legislation. Mr. Robb?
Ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter ten fifty, electricity, section ten fifty, point oh four, metering and billing, G, deposits of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Three.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the third reading, ordinance number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, discussion.
Well, as I stated before, I'm not in favor of this ordinance. I would much rather see some work done with the current amounts for deposits. It's been mentioned that, by the law director, by the way, that we don't have to return those deposits as long as the person is getting their service. I would be, I would be much more in favor of leaving the rates as they are currently and changing that language so that the deposit is retained as long as the person has that service. In other words, until they terminate their utilities with the city, at which time the deposit could be applied to their outstanding bill and what, if any, left over, then that returned to them.
Mr. Martin?
I'm inclined along similar lines, you know. I appreciate all the work that's went into this and all the research and stuff like that, but one thing did stick out when we were discussing before, and Mr. Ensmen said, you know, the reason that we're going, planning on going from twelve months to twenty-four months is as soon as we return these deposits, then all of a sudden, delinquency tends to spike. And I think if the issue specifically is around rental properties, which is difficult to get back, I think we need to treat those especially as you would a renter and their deposit. You know, a deposit's a deposit to be returned when you leave or you change addresses. And honestly, I would even, let's say, to move residences within the city, I would say that being able to use that deposit then as, you know, that deposit moves so that they don't have two deposits on record, whatever, I think we can fix that if that's an issue going forward. Personally, I'm, I am begrudgingly okay with the increased amounts, but I feel that that deposit piece is what's actually going to fix the problem. So I think, I would like to see at least that changed, and then we can have a discussion, and I'm open to discussion about the other. But for me, as it's written, I can't support these. But I think that if we were to treat those deposits, actual deposits, I think that fixes the issue, and then we can have further discussion on the depository amounts.
Mr. Cutler?
I'd just like to say that me and Councilman McBlackland, we went down to the utility office and we sat down with the ladies and talked about this legislation and what could be done or what it could do to help the city out with this problem that we're having, these excessive bills that are racking up rather quickly. And they were in favor of these to help with that. Now, the thing with the deposit, I would entertain that idea. I mean, I'd be opening, open to listening to that, and I think that that could have some bearing on this. The only problem with that that I could see would be, I don't think it would do anything to help our current debt and bring that down. But if we wanted to talk about that a little bit more with Mr. Ensmen and maybe let him crunch the numbers and see what, that, what he could come up with in doing so with that in mind, I would suggest that we maybe postpone this again and give him the opportunity to vote that suggestion over.
Robb? Go ahead, Mr. Robb.
I would, I would recommend, actually, I'm gonna move the, refer this back to the committee. Ordinance number twenty-four, ordinance number twenty-five, and ordinance number twenty-six of two thousand twenty-five, refer that back to the committee for some additional work and see what comes of that.
I have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Roberts to refer this back to the Utilities and Streets Committee for further work, including not only ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-five, but also number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, and ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
And twenty-eight.
Have you been going all the way through, all of these, twenty-seven and twenty-eight?
Well, I don't know if we need to do all of them, 'cause some of them were in regards to deposits. Some of them were in regards to fees.
Yeah. I have no problem with twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Yeah, so it was. Twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-six. Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six is what the motion is. I understand that motion to refer back to the committee, those three orders, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, that's what the motion is on the floor. Everyone understand that? End of discussion. Mr. Martin?
I did have one question, and maybe this can't be answered now, but this is for Mr. Ensmen. The, for commercial industrial customers, we put the deposit as not exceeding a certain percentage as opposed to a flat rate. Is that level of data, is that available for residential?
Tough question, answer it potentially. It depends if you have a current owner who moves throughout different properties. We can track the movement, but some of the new ownership within the city, the direct of the city, unless we have some history.
Well, we have a history of that property.
We do.
All right, okay. So that's what my question is, like, so say that I'm looking at buying, you know, ten grand ballpark, right? I could go, today, I could go there and say, hey, can you give me a breakdown what the utilities are so I can have a factor, like, how much of these general utilities?
Yes, but it would assume different. Now, as you're saying, it assumes the same.
I, I understand. Right? But if we had that as a framework, and what I'm getting at is, obviously, we're treating all domiciles the same, so.
But actually, your discussion probably not remain to the postponed, our referral.
Well, I disagree, 'cause it's this deal, whenever we refer something, we usually refer instructions to the committee, and I think this is important stuff that they need to go.
But I think it's probably more appropriate to discuss at the committee meeting. We're actually discussing the referral to the committee, so I would, I just encourage everyone, any further discussion, we put this, this motion. Any further discussion? If it's on the vote, do you refer back to the Utilities and Streets Committee? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter ten fifty, electricity, section ten fifty, point oh two, rates and charges for service, E, miscellaneous charges, one, reconnection charge, and six, application fee of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Over.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, passes, third reading.
If we pass the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, amending chapter ten forty-four, sewer charges, section ten forty-four, point oh two, conditions of service, rate schedule F, production cost adjuster of codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Sorry.
We have a motion by C, now we have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading, ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. Oh, Mr. Cutler, I'm sorry, I gotta cut it with that. Mr. Roberts and Mr. Cutler, for the third reading, discussion. I don't think I've ever heard that in all my years. Fair warning. Any discussion on the third reading, ordinance twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, passes, third reading. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Ordinance number twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five, transferring appropriations for the year two thousand twenty-five and declaring emergency.
The rules required that the ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin, as the rule requires that ordinance be read on two separate occasions be suspended. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb?
Nay.
Mr. Roberts?
Nay.
Mr. Cutler?
Nay.
Mr. Martin?
Nay.
Motion to suspend, passes.
If we pass the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of order number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Mr. Crum.
Sir, as we spoke when we did the call to do appropriations, we knew it was going to be really tight with fire, and if everything didn't go perfect, we wouldn't have enough in the line items for wages, and obviously, we've been short-staffed for, well, the entire year, and we've had several retirements, resignations, and so things didn't go perfect. We're going to be about a hundred thousand dollars short before the end of the year, so Finance Committee, we discussed it, and we felt that the best option for the time being would be to transfer some appropriations from the police wage line items. I don't like to do that, but the police department has done a wonderful job staying well underneath their appropriated wages, and it doesn't look like they're going to need all of it by the end of the year, so that's why best solution from a legislative side is to not solve, but stop the lead, I guess.
Mr. Martin.
So, that's horrible, since Mr. Crum made that sound. We are not taking money from the police to give to the fire department, that's not what's happening here. We, we basically, we budget the money, and the police, because they were still working on film position, et cetera, the money that we put in their bucket exceeds what they're going to use for the end of the year. If they didn't use it by the end of the year, it's not as if that carries over the next year and they're able to grow that bucket, so it's just a matter of, we have to pay things out of the appropriate line item. That's what's happening. Make that very clear.
Mr. Rob.
So, worst-case scenario, this is not going to have any effect on the police department for a shortage there?
Mr. Crum.
Correct, it will not affect, they will not have a shortage.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Order number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into contract change order with Silencing Construction Services Inc. for the Curtis Drive sanitary sewer project in the amount of twelve thousand sixty-two and dollars and five cents as an increase and declaring an emergency.
Who the residents should we take up past?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, doing the sanitary sewer project, the road work, just need eighty-four or square yards of repairing that area based on numerous things, condition of the existing pavement and aligning and so forth.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Resolution number twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the city of Shelby to enter into agreement with Midwest Consulting and Management LLC for the remodel of an existing building pursuant to Ohio Remise Code sections three seven three five oh six five to three seven three five oh four seven.
Who the residents should we take up past? We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-five, discussion.
Jessica Griffin, economic community development advocacy. Thank you, RCBG. Thank you for entertaining us today. I think it's evident to everyone that this is a catalytic project for downtown. We're super excited. The Milliron family has given a lot to Shelby, continues to do so. So this is an opportunity for us to assist him as he's philanthropically bringing a very old building back to life, bringing a boutique hotel and a restaurant to downtown Shelby. He's got a two-year timeframe, and I can tell you that he's ready to go, so again, thank you for considering it, and I'm excited to see this happen in the future.
Mr. Geis. When reviewing this, when I worked with Mrs. Griffin on this, we used, obviously, like, we used documents, and you'll see on one page here of Mayor Hunter.
I got two of them.
So that does not need to be in the agreement, so, sorry about that. There was a blank page before that, I don't know how they get in there, so those will be changed.
Well, they're not even attached to anything, they're just like, going pages, waste time work anyways.
Well, what happened is, is when we recreated this, we used the norm for it, but it had a blank page, we thought it was done, until it got printed, and now we're starting to find out, but I don't know where it is.
Mr. Martin.
I just want to thank Mrs. Griffin for her work on this, per usual, she does a great job of thinking up great ways to come value-add for our our essential customers, which are those who are trying to bring economic growth to our community, so I really appreciate that.
And, once again, I want to say a huge thank you to the Milliron family, and Javel all that are residents of Shelby. We can talk about all the exhibits and facilities, although we noticed the little First National Bank building, which for some of us have a little age on there, can remember going in there and transacting business back in the days, so it'd be great to see this come to life in a new and different way, or new and different ways, I should say, so.
Mr. Cutler.
Yeah, I know, I've seen those before, but you know, the Milliron family has done so much for this community, this this is a brand new beginning.
All righty, ready for a vote on resolution number thirty, two thousand twenty-five? Mr. Crum.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Resolution number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, clearing to vacate a portion of alley running parallel between West Tucker Avenue and Earl Avenue in the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Who the residents should we take up past?
Second. A motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, discussion. Mr. Geis.
And you can see in the exhibit, but it's kind of hard to know where that's at, so I did pull it up on the screen here, it's empty then, West Tucker and run parallel there and Earl, so it would be the section of this alley starting here and going all the way to here. Just to note that this property owner, the petitioner, was unable to obtain that signature, I don't even know what it was, but it does, they already meet the fifty-one percent, so if this petition, this resolution were passed, we will make sure that we get service to that owner for the board of commissioners here, so.
Mr. Cutler.
So, I was I was looking at that, and I, so you said it was the, what, the hall property you couldn't get the signature on?
The petitioner did get to put the signature on.
Oh, that was the hall one, right?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the the other one I was concerned about was the very last house, the nineteen fifty-four there. Do they, you know, when you look at that, it's hard to tell, but do they have enough property lines far enough away from the house that they can get, like, vehicles in behind their house or whatever? I'm just thinking down the line, and what if they got to get a construction crew in there, put some siding up or something, or they don't have room to get around that property and stay off their neighbor's property without having that alley access?
Mr. Geis.
I mean, that'd be a normal problem all throughout town, so, you know, they, this this property owner did sign, and they also own this property here, and that's not to mean that's forever, so, I mean, to put siding on, I would think there would be enough room and whatnot.
Okay, but that was my only concern, I just don't want to see future problems down the road, because now they've got an undeveloped alley that they can come down and not have any problems with other neighbors, but, you know, property's changed hands quite frequently over the years, so I I wouldn't want to hamstring any future owner of that property and not being able to access it. I think that's the reason why they have these alleys in the first place, wouldn't you agree?
Back in the day when these were laid out, I mean, that was, the barn was probably back there to keep to their horse and whatnot, so.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Resolution number thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to of the city of Shelby to execute the Richland County Joint Comprehensive Land Use Plan agreements.
Who the residents should we take up past?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Cutler for the passage of resolution number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Griffin, you want to say something about this one, too? Just briefly.
This, we appropriated earlier this year, knowing we wanted to do a comprehensive land use plan in the city of Shelby, as I talked it over with Joseph Chetty at Regional Planning, she indicated that the county really needs to update their plan as well, and Mansfield was also looking at a plan, so we kind of decided it might be in all of our interests to mine, force it, and do it all together, so we can have a county-wide plan, we very specifically know we need a Shelby-specific plan as well, Mansfield-specific plan, so that is in our RFP and the proposals that have come back, I'm very aware of that, so it is a joint plan, meaning we are going to do the county, but specifically, we will have a Shelby-centered plan as well, so I think it's the best of all worlds, and it gives us additional resources to use, so we're going to figure another plan.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Crum.
I'd just like to say, it's it's a good idea whenever you can get multiple entities together to pool their resources and get more out of the service. You know, if you get these folks here doing this plan, and they're doing it for a lot of different areas at once, it's kind of like, you know, contractor, when you get a contractor and just to do a single little job, they might charge a little bit more, but if he's going to be doing multiple jobs at the same place at the same time, then he might cut you a little bit of a break, so it just just makes sense to to pool your resources whenever you can to get the best deal, best bang for your buck, you know.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Resolution number thirty-two, two thousand twenty-five, passes.
Resolution number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, authorizing the mayor as director of public safety of the city of Shelby to apply for the fiscal year twenty-six Marx Model Agency Radio Communication System grant from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of State Fire Marshal for Marx radio equipment fees and declaring an emergency.
Who the residents should we take up past?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of resolution thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, discussion.
Mr. Geis. I worked with, kept in touch with Washburn on this. Normally, the past few years, the fire department has just applied for the service fees for the Marx radio, who now have them long enough to be stating that they can also apply for new batteries, because we know batteries don't last forever, so there's that's the additional four thousand thirty-six fifty for batteries plus the service. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Resolution number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-five, passes. Come to miscellaneous business, business for council. Mr. Martin.
Move to go to executive session, with the following purpose, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of property, competitive bidding, and premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts, to go into executive session for the reasons so read, discussion. Mr. Martin. And if council decides to do this, we invite you, Mr. Geis, and Mr. Iser. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Rob.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Cutler.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Motion passes to the executive session at eight thirty-five.